I'll be okay. If I drink too much, then we'll have to go to recess for a minute. How are you doing, Jay?
I'm good.
Good. No, now, I just saw John, like, I spoke with John physically in person in this city twenty minutes ago. We start calling him Plus Five John.
Plus Five.
Star. Just five fifteen now. Jason, Jason, do you want to do the invocation? Okay, I'm throwing it to you today. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for City of Fountainhead Thursday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M. Uh, Mr. Councilman Sanders, would you mind leading us in the invocation?
Sure. By your heads. The only part of thank you for this day, thank you for allowing us to be able to be here, I pray that you give us the wisdom for what you want us to do for the city, and I pray that you watch over all of us and this meeting, in your name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. All right, first up, we have a bittersweet moment. Can I get, uh, can I get Loretta Beverly to come up for a second?
There you go.
No, it wasn't expected, man.
I don't want to drop anything. Uh, so for those who don't know Loretta, I'd be surprised because she's one of the, come up here. Make sure the camera is on you before the internet. She's one of our great employees in our natural gas department, she's one of the smiling faces you see if you go into the natural gas office, and has helped thousands of customers over the years, uh, for our both residents and non-residents alike, businesses, and has been a wonderful team member and one of, uh, one, uh, one of all of our employees are nice, but Gl- but, but Loretta is super nice. And, um, she is retiring, uh, this month, um, after twenty years of service to the citizens of, and the, and the, um, customers of, citizens of Fountainhead and the customers of the natural gas company, um, and we just want to thank you profusely for your years of service, uh, and, uh, and making sure that our, our city stays in tip-top shape. So we have, we have a gift for you, we have a certificate of appreciation, um, and we allow about twenty minutes for you to speak if you'd like to. Y'all would might help me thank, uh... We also have a, a gift for you as well, so, thank you so much, and, and, uh, you're, we're all, we are all considered very lucky to, I think, I think also for the part of retired retirees ever having to request time off.
All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing to receive public input on proposed changes to city council wards to reflect population and demographic information as a part of the two thousand and twenty census. Uh, this is, uh, this process of redrawing lines is required by, by state and federal law, and, uh, Mr. Bell or John Marshall, I'll turn it over to y'all to, to explain what's in front of us.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. We do have an ordinance for first reading before you all later on in the agenda, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four. Uh, the redistricting is a process of redrawing our lines, uh, from which public officials are elected, such as yourself, it typically takes place after each census. Uh, we most recently had our, uh, decennial census in two thousand and twenty, and this is to accommodate population changes over the previous decade. So while we know Fountainhead is growing, uh, not all of the growth has been evenly distributed among, amongst our six wards, um, and so South Carolina Code of Laws requires that municipalities redistrict within a reasonable time prior to the next general election, following, uh, that most recent census. So, South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs is a state office, and they presented us with a two thousand and twenty redistricting benchmark report, uh, that was dated November third, two thousand and twenty-one, and that indicated that we had, uh, a pretty significant deviation amongst our six council wards. Uh, initially, they thought it was around forty-six percent, um, later on, they updated those numbers, and it was actually closer, um, to, to over sixty percent deviation. Um, and so, uh, RFA brought forth a proposed, uh, ward map in which all of the wards would have pretty much equal, uh, population, and with the, the proposed map tonight, they're indicating a range deviation of only three point seven eight percent, which is well under the, uh, the five percent that's recommended. And, uh, the new council ward map must be in place prior to City of Fountainhead's next election, uh, and that filing period would be July seventeenth through August fifteenth. So, uh, if councils to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four on first reading tonight, then in, at our April council meeting, you all will give second and final reading, and the new ward map would, would be in place, and those wishing to, to file for our next municipal election would know exactly which ward that they live in.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Can you explain, the map has been posted, uh, on our website, on our social media, and have we received any comments through, from y'all?
Yes, sir, we've had the, uh, the old ward map, or our existing one, the new proposed one, all of the, the benchmark information, as well as, uh, the information, uh, indicating what the, the new wards look like on our website for probably at least a month now. Uh, we have advertised in the newspaper, um, for this public hearing, and, to my knowledge, we have not received any feedback whatsoever.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment, um, from any members of the public who wish to speak on this, this issue. Seeing none, uh, any comments from council or anything? Because y'all are citizens too. All right, seeing none, I'll go and close the public hearing, and this item is later in our agenda, um, as well. Next up is the public forum, uh, with folks signed up to speak. Uh, first up, Mr. James Barbary, if you want to come up, and state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes, sir. Thank you for being here.
Um, my name is, excuse me, I'm a biologist, James Barbary, I live at two hundred Nash Street. Uh, I'm opposed to the, uh, rezoning of lots one oh eight and one ten. Uh, I find it very interesting that, uh, when Mr. Cashin bought, uh, the Henderson property and quickly had the house moved, I took a little trip to Europe for six weeks visiting friends, and when I came back, I ran into Roger Case at the, uh, Coach House Restaurant, and I was sitting in the position, he was looking back at me, and when I got up to walk out, he said, hey, Jim, come over, I'd like to say hello, and he said, you remind me so much of your father when I saw you sitting back there. Well, several of these people know who my father was, was on the council from nineteen sixty to ninety-eight, when he died, in fact, was at City Hall on Monday, and he died that night. Uh, but I would like to know who's buying the Helms property, and the connection to the property, I spoke with, uh, Jim Cashin about three months ago, and he informed me that he had sold that property. So I want to know what the connection is, and what's so important to come in and destroy our street and turn it into a commercial, when two blocks below me, a new development with a hundred and fifty houses has just been built. So what's so important to Fountainhead that we can't live without, and is going to benefit every citizen in Fountainhead? So I'm opposed to the rezoning, that's about all I have to say. And I just read your profile when you were running, and what you wanted to accomplish about the traffic, it's atrocious in the city. It's atrocious what Mr. Cashin has stuck up there on that corner, one of the entrances into the town. That's just my opinion, but I have a right to my opinion, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barbary. Up next is Mr. Joe, uh, Joe Genetti. Good evening. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Joseph Genetti, uh, thirteen eleven South Main Street, I'm, uh, the owner of six oh five Main Street, South Main Street, and it's in conjunction with the Putnam rezoning. I have a map there showing the properties and the water management right now, how water runs, and the purple here are pipes that go underneath Lawrence Court, Putnam, and this is Main Street. All this water here drains through the yellow, that's the natural right now, that goes down through the property where he wants to put multifamily. Now, last week at the rezoning meeting, nothing was ever brought up what was going to be put on there, it was just a general consensus that you can go up to fourteen point five units on a one acre lot. That whole neighborhood there is single-family, single-story buildings. And for him to go in there and do what possibly could be done, because nothing was given, no stipulations were put on what he could do, it was just a general, this is what our plan is for the city, and that to, I don't know if anybody knows how that property is, it drops a good ten to twelve feet from the street, and the backside is all low, and that's where the water goes. No matter how much water that, that rains and goes through, comes off the streets, both lots stay dry, and that. So for him to level that lot and put up a retention pond supposedly in the back, it's going to flood me out. In turn, it's going to flood out Putnam Street and keep on going back. I'm opposed to, what I should say is, take a step back, get a plan from this gentleman, get a water management plan before you approve rezoning. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. All right, next up is the consent agenda, which are the minutes from February ninth, the regular council meeting, is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Thomason, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Garrett, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Bell, your report.
Thank you, Ma- uh, Mayor, and members of council. Give some, some updates first on some of our projects. Our new utilities complex, uh, the pad subcontractor's on site, uh, the pad area has been rocked and packed, uh, they were planning on pouring the pad tomorrow, um, we will see with this rain that's come in and planning to come in, um, but with the weather forecast, they are anticipating, uh, pouring that on Wednesday, March fifteenth, uh, at least starting that. So we are, we are seeing some progress there. Sanctified Hill Park, um, fencing's around the basketball courts, um, ha- have been constructed, the playground equipment has already been arriving on site. We are still looking at, you know, an early April, uh, open date, so we are moving right along and on budget and, and everything looking good there, and we will be communicating with you all on a, on a ribbon-cutting ceremony, uh, as soon as we can. Fairby Street Basketball Court, uh, contract's been reviewed and submitted to the contractor, which is Sossaman Construction, who is also the contractor for Sanctified Hill Park. For our Woodside Streetscape project, um, we have asked our engineers to redesign, uh, the project to, and break it up almost like in phases, or alternates, if you will, uh, to give the city more flexibility. So when DOT bids that project out, if it comes in drastically over budget like it did last time, the city would have the opportunity to say, okay, these are the priorities, uh, that we want, so we want to make sure that, you know, this phase is done, and if there's enough money, we can do this phase, and so we can at least get this project moving. For Emmanuel Sullivan Sports Complex ADA restroom, uh, GCRNA, uh, they went ahead and executed a contract with their low bidder, which was Satchel Construction, they did that on March first, and that's going to be the, the new ADA accessible restroom facility, um, next to the Miracle League. Um, we, our Public Works Department, uh, Mr. Sliden's been working on the new security camera system for all our facilities, um, it has been installed over at City Hall, the next building, uh, to receive that system will be the police station, and we also anticipate Sanctified Hill Park and the new utilities complex will have our new system up and running, uh, prior to the construction completion. For our interstate signage, uh, project, we are still waiting on SC DOT encroachment permit approval, um, we've requested to have that reviewed as soon as possible, and have even this week spoken to, uh, Representative Mark Willis to see what he can do to, to help move that along. In our Community Relations Department, we do have several, uh, big events coming up here in April, we have our seventeenth annual Mac Arnold Cornbread and Collard Greens Blues Festival, along with Jeep Jam, along with the Spring Market, so it's going to be a busy day on, uh, April fifteenth, from noon to six. On April twenty-ninth, we will have our Second Annual Italian-American Heritage Festival, that'll also be from noon to six, and then, you know, real, uh, right around the corner, we've got Sounds of Summer and Farmer's Market, uh, starting, um, towards the end of May. Our Second Annual Juneteenth Soul Food Festival will be on June seventeenth, that first committee, uh, or the first committee meeting for that, uh, festival is going to be held upcoming here on April fifteenth, and then make your plans now for Fireworks Spectacular, our Fourth of July festival, which will be on July first, starting around six o'clock, we already have Craven Mellon booked again, um, should be, it should be a good time. Human Resources, they have been extremely busy recruiting and advertising positions, um, we have six vacancies in the Police Department, and we have five offers that have been accepted. And so they are in the post-offer screening phase, and hope to have them onboard as soon as we can, I think it's a mix of certified and uncertified, the uncertified ones will have to go through, uh, South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy to be certified. Uh, in our Fire Department, we had a, a new, kind of a newer position, our Fire Marshal Training Officer, and that offer has been accepted, and that person starts on April fourth. Our Planning and Development, uh, Department has a manager, uh, position vacant, and that offer has also been accepted, uh, and in the post-offer screening phase. Parks and Rec, basketball season concluded, uh, towards, right at the end of February, for the All-Stars, Fountainhead was the eight U Western District runner-up, and then in ten U, they were the Western District runner-up as well, so we're real proud of, uh, of those teams. Spring baseball, softball has started, we had six hundred and sixty-two participants sign up, which was another record year, um, seems like every year I come back to you all saying it's another record participation sign up. All practices started this week, and they're practicing at Emmanuel Sullivan Sports Complex and PD Terry City Park. Our, uh, senior adults are fifty-five-plus program, uh, we are beginning the process of, uh, kind of making that department have a, a little bit more robust activities, and they are going to be taking a half-day luncheon trip to Travelers Rest on, uh, April twentieth, and they will also be taking a trip to the State House in Columbia on June fifteenth. And we would invite council members that, um, have the ability and want to attend, uh, to, to come, I know they're going to get, get to hear from Representative Mark Willis on, on June fifteenth there and get a tour of the State House, and should be a, a, a great networking and a good time for our fifty-five-plus crowd. Uh, in our Planning and Development, uh, Department, our comprehensive plan or envision, um, we have our second Steering Committee meeting scheduled for March thirtieth at five fifteen, and we also have a, a survey that is being finalized and will be released to the public shortly. Uh, we will be putting that survey out on social media, on our website, we will also have hard copies, uh, for folks to, to fill out, and we really want to get as much citizen feedback as we can, so as soon as that is, is ready to be released to the public, I'll make sure you all have it, and we can get it out to, to faith-based groups, any, any group that we have here in the community. Um, over in the Fire Department, Chief Alexander, recently graduated from the University of North Carolina Charlotte Fire Management Leadership Program, we're, uh, real proud of him for that, and new bunker gear has been, the order's been placed, and also, um, new uniform, uh, fitting has already been scheduled. And in our Police Department, our Third Annual Superhero Five K Run will be held on April nineteenth, April nine, or April's going to be a busy month for, for all of us, um, that'll, that race will start at eight A. M., and all the proceeds are going to benefit the Little White House. Our twenty-fourth annual golf tournament is going to be held on May twenty-fourth, Shotgun Start, starting at noon over at Carolina Springs Country Club, and, uh, a nice update that we have here from the Police Department is that they have sent their letter to request, um, their onsite accreditation assessment from the South Carolina Law Enforcement Accreditation, uh, or Scalia, and, because they have already previously completed their self-assessment, the mock phase visit, they've made the corrections from the mock phase, and so we anticipate when they, when they schedule that, uh, onsite accreditation assessment, that we will pass with flying colors and, um, have that accreditation. Next week, the Chamber of Commerce will have their an- annual membership dinner on the sixteenth at the Activity Center, uh, Lieutenant Governor Ebbett will be the guest of honor. At the Yon Center, they have two shows coming up in April, April first, they have a Journey Tribute Band called Journey, uh, sorry, a Journey Tribute Band called Departure, um, I went to that, I apologize, I went to that, uh, several years back, and it was a great show, and then they also have the Kingsmen coming on April fourteenth, and then our History Museum has an interesting exhibit coming up, uh, April eighteenth through the July, through July twenty-ninth, which will be remembering the Golden Strip Speedway exhibit, that'll be interesting. One last thing I wanted to remind you all of is that, uh, King Wilson is a four-year-old that lives here in the Fountainhead community, uh, he is what we call a wish kid, he, he has cancer, and Make-A-Wish is granting him and his family his wish of taking a, a family trip to Disney World, and so this Sunday, March twelfth, on Depot Street, and if it's raining, it'll be in the Farmer's Market at three P. M., uh, we're asking the public to come out, attend, cheer, show support, bring signs, he's going to be taking a, a ride on the fire truck around town, um, going to be bringing him, uh, to Depot Street on the fire truck, and, and he's really excited about this, and, um, we're, we're fortunate to have a member of our community that sits on the South Carolina, uh, Make-A-Wish Board, and so anytime we have a Fountainhead wish kid, we really want to try to, to make sure we go above and beyond, so I'd invite you, uh, to that on Sunday at three. With that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions, um, thank you, Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Bell? The only note I, I have is the three eighty-five project, um, the, the sign, um, I don't know if it's due in part two, I don't know if the public knows this yet, but it's public online that they'll be repaving three eighty-five from exit thirty-one down to twenty-three. I called them this week to ask for an update about it, so I don't know if that's a factor, uh, so, I don't know, hopefully not, hopefully they can just get it done before then, but, uh, that is going to happen, starting, uh, so, survey work they told me in April, and then construction probably this summer, and it'll take, take a number of months, but, or potentially a year, but three eighty-five, I think the whole way to thirty-one, exit thirty-one north, will be, will be repaved. So, uh, and I've, I've already asked about exit twenty-four as well, don't worry, I, I, I have made those calls as well. So, um, but any other questions, Mr. Bell? Hearing none, we'll go on to new business, is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four, which is the redistricting ordinance, uh, Mr. Bell, any other comments on that front?
No, um, uh, just that the, um, RFA, when they rebalanced all of the, all of the wards, kind of the goal was one thousand eight hundred and eighty people in each of those, and, um, you know, in, in Ward one, ten, ten people less, Ward two, twenty-six people, uh, less, Ward three, twenty-four less, Ward four, forty-five people over, Ward five, ten under, and Ward six, twenty-four under, so again, those are, those are really small, uh, numbers comparatively, and so that, the, the lowest deviation is, uh, one point three seven percent, the highest deviation's two point four, so that gives us a range of three point seven eight percent, which again is well under the recommended five percent deviation range.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve on first reading ordinance twenty three, twenty-three dash four?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash five, which is a franchise agreement, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, this ordinance is for first reading to, uh, and it provides for the grant of a franchise according to South Carolina Code, providing for limitations related to the same, providing for the payment of compensation related to the same, um, and, and some other related matter, matters. So in two thousand and six, the General Assembly passed the South Carolina Competitive Cable Services Act, it provides that cable companies may apply for a statewide franchise agreement, municipalities may establish a franchise fee payable under the same state, uh, under the state franchise, but that fee may not exceed five percent of gross revenues. That is our standard franchise fee that we have for, uh, Duke Energy, Lawrence Electric, AT&T, Spectrum, all of those. They, the municipality may not charge for any other permit inspection or encroachment fee beyond that franchise fee of five percent. For cable providers operating under a statewide franchise, uh, it is recommended that we adopt an ordinance consenting to such franchise, establishing what that franchise fee would be, so not to exceed five percent, and imposing any other terms and conditions allowed by law, uh, within that municipality. So Knowledgey of Charleston, Inc. is, uh, has a statewide franchise already with the South Carolina Secretary of State, they are more commonly known as WOW, Internet Cable and Phone, um, and they are simply seeking approval to make their services available here, uh, for the residents of Fountainhead. I know that they have applied for the same, uh, municipal franchise, uh, approval in Malden and Simpsonville as well, and, and both of them have, have granted that franchise.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash five? Thank you, Mr. Garrett, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Don, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is twenty, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one, uh, zoning ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one, uh, which is a zoning map on Putnam Street, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor, this ordinance for first reading would rezone approximately one point one five acres on Putman Street, near South Main Street, uh, from R twelve Residential District to RM Mul- residential multifamily. The adopted future land use map back in two thousand and seventeen calls for high-density residential use for this area, which is consistent with RM zoning. RM zoning allows for townhomes and/or apartments, the existing land use is vacant, just wooded land, uh, land uses vary greatly in this area of Fountainhead, uh, you've got large lots, uh, small residential lots, and industrial uses are all within that. You've got large lots, small residential lots, and industrial uses are all within that same vicinity of the subject parcel. An adjacent parcel southwest of the subject property is zoned RM, as are the single-family residences across the street from, on Putman, are also zoned RM. The Planning Commission voted for one to approve the rezoning request. Multiple residents of the Tucker Branch subdivision did speak in opposition to the rezoning at the Planning Commission public hearing on March second. And if approved, up to fourteen and a half to fifteen units of multifamily housing could be constructed on the, on the subject site if rezoned as recommended.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve on first reading twenty twenty-three dash one? Thank you, Mr. Thompson, is there a second? I'll second it to get on the floor. I have, I have a couple comments about this. I don't, I don't think this is an appropriate zoning for this, for this property. I think, in my opinion, I appreciate staff and Planning Commission, though, using the metrics that are provided by the city to make their determination to get it to us. I think the future land use map, I don't, I don't know if it reflects where I think that area and community would like to grow as, as they grow over time. It's my personal opinion, and so I think RM just isn't an appropriate zoning for, for this, for this particular parcel. That's where I stand on it. So, those are my comments.
I'd like to hear more about the water runoff too before doing a sound on this property, if it is that much of a wash through there. I don't know if the tension pond's going to, going to slow that water down enough.
Right. So in, in South Carolina, State Code through the Comprehensive Plan Enabling Act and South, and our city code, a rezoning doesn't require any sort of site plan or land disturbance plans or anything like that. It only, it only requires the applicant to fill out an application stating the property and what their desired zoning is, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but we've got to look out for the citizens living in the surrounding.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. I have a question. Regardless of the outcome, John Marshall, this is still voted on twice correct, regardless of the outcome or if it, if it is reversed?
It would have to be a supermajority.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just making sure because it's an ordinance that it, that's.
It would have to be a supermajority to stop.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, Planning Commission did approve, so therefore it does require a supermajority, and with six present, that makes it four for tonight. And then, so it would not move forward if, if it was denied tonight. So, just so you all know kind of what, what that means. Any other questions or comments?
No other questions. I have some concerns as you, Mr. Mayor, in terms of whether this is an appropriate, appropriate rezone for this area. I'm not necessarily opposed to multifamily housing, but I'm not sure if it fits well here, particularly as we undergo our master plan, wanting to make sure we do that in a coherent way, and then I also have real concerns over the, the water, and wanted to make sure we're not having problems down the road.
Right. All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve, to accept the Planning, Planning Commission's recommendation of approval. I'll call for a roll call vote, if that's right, to make things a little easier. Ms. Adams, if you want to do that.
Sir, Mr. Sanders?
Nay.
Mr. Thompson?
Nay.
Mr. Garrett?
Nay.
Mr. Don?
No.
Mr. Blackstone?
Nay.
Mayor McClear?
No. Motion fails. We will move on to ordinance Z twenty twenty-three dash two. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance for first reading would rezone approximately two point six nine acres at one oh eight and one ten Nash Street, from R twelve residential district to C two commercial district. The adopted future land use map calls for commercial use on these subject parcels, which is consistent with C two zoning. The subject parcels consist of a vacant house at one oh eight Nash Street and a vacant lot at one ten Nash Street. Surrounding land uses and zoning are industrial to the north, commercial to the south and west, and residential to the east. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the rezoning request at the March second meeting. The applicant, Telus LLC, is a large and reputable commercial developer in the area, but no specific plans for the site have been submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve on first reading Z twenty twenty-three dash two?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Don, is there a second? Yeah, okay, a second, Mr. Thompson, any questions or comments?
I would just say, so we, we, there's no indication on what they plan to do, is that right? Yeah, I have a little concern just over not knowing what it is they intend to do. Obviously, they're not bound by their intention, but I'd like to have a better idea on what they're looking to do with this piece of property, given that the zones in, in the immediate area are so different. I'd like to know, I'd be more comfortable.
I'd like to understand what the property's going to use for.
Is there, is it fair to request that of, of the applicant, and it's on them whether or not they would like to provide more information, I suspect, correct? Mr. Bell?
So from my understanding, that cannot be a condition of approval or denial for rezoning. If it was any sort of, after a rezoning and somebody wants to develop that property for the intended land use that that was now rezoned, they would have to submit a preliminary plat. If it was a subdivision, that would go through what we call the subdivision advisory committee process. If it's a commercial process of, of land use and it's not subdividing, you know, more than six lots, then that is, that preliminary plan has always been approved at the staff level.
Yeah. I think if it's like, I, I, I'll make a, a motion in a second to see if we can maybe get some of those questions answered before we do. Yeah, so if it's, I'll, I'll make a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move to table that one. Next up is first reading annexation twenty twenty-three dash one. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would annex and rezone approximately six point seven eight acres on Hunter Road on a portion of tax map ending in one thousand. Upon annexation, the subject property would be placed into Council Ward Four. The zoning would be changed from R twelve residential just, residential district in Greenville County to R fifteen residential district in Fountain Inn, which would reduce the permitted density of the development. It is surrounded by the Braxton Ridge subdivision to the east, the golf course to the north and west, and undeveloped vacant residential land to the south across Durbin Creek. The parcel is currently part of a larger hundred and seventy-nine acre piece of property owned by Fox Run Country Club. The rest of the Fox Run Country Club property is zoned RS or residential suburban, as it is split-zoned in the county, in Greenville County currently. So this six point seven eight acres that is asked to be annexed, that portion of this hundred and seventy-nine acre property is zoned R twelve in the county, while the rest of it is zoned RS. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the rezoning and annexation at our March second meeting. The applicant has indicated that he plans on five to six residential lots for the property. R fifteen zoning would allow up to around eighteen lots could be created under our, our fifteen zoning for this property. However, the applicant has indicated only five to six lots would be created. At the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant stated that two of the homes would be for, one would be for him, and the other would be for his daughter, and the, the remaining lots would be sold off for, again, residential, single-family use.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve annexation twenty twenty-three dash one?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, any questions? I think it's a great zone for that area, so I echo the Planning Commission's comments during that. Any one else?
Just a question, do we hear any opposition from residents, particularly on that side of the city during this time?
We did not have anyone speak in favor or against at the public hearing, and as far as staff is aware, we have not received any, any comments electronically or by phone.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is approval to authorize the city administrator to execute engagement agreement with Malden and Jenkins for auditing services. Mr. Bell?
All right, thank you, Mayor. The city of Fountain Inn solicited sealed proposals from qualified vendors for financial services for the fiscal periods ending in June thirty, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Our assistant city administrator, our county manager, and natural gas director evaluated proposals from six firms. The selection committee determined that Malden and Jenkins was the most responsive and advantageous to the city to provide auditing services for fiscal year twenty-three, with the option to provide services for two subsequent years. As we had discussed previously, kind of a best practice for auditing services is to, to change auditing firms every three to five years or so. We've had our current auditors for, for longer than that, and it's just kind of a, a best practice to have some fresh eyes on there. The city budgets right at forty-one thousand for auditing services annually. The proposal from Malden and Jenkins was thirty-five thousand, and then five thousand additional if a single audit is required. A single audit is brought on by a certain amount of federal funds. If the city receives a cer- certain threshold of federal funds, then that single audit is required.
We will probably need it for the remaining balance of ARPA.
Yeah, almost every municipality and county in the, in the country, the, over these next several years, because of ARPA, or it's going to fall into that single audit category.
All right. I'll move to approve the city administrator executing engagement letter, engagement agreement with Malden and Jenkins, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, any questions?
If I can just say one thing, not necessarily related to this, to the firm that we're looking to, looking to enter an agreement with, but it's just related to you, Mr. Administrator, Ms. Reed, and then the rest of the folks that support you all in terms of how well you do our city finances. I know our previous auditing firm has identified your practices as being top-notch, and so I, I know our council certainly appreciates that. We have a great deal of confidence in, in your work, and you all, you all do a great job, so thank you for continuing to make a clean audit and continuing to deliver for our residents and, and making our role easier by, by bringing such a good report, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, council member. We, we certainly do have great staff here, and, and we anticipate the first year that you engage a new auditing firm, that first one is always going to take a little bit longer. You know, both, both sides have to kind of understand the, the, each other's processes and procedures, and, and we anticipate this because there are fresh eyes, being a little bit more stringent on some things, and, and honestly, that's good, because you don't want your, your auditors to start getting comfortable with, and, and not testing or checking as many of those things, because, hey, we checked it last year. So that's one of the reasons why we bring in a fresh face.
All right. There's motions on the floor, and you have the questions. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is an executive session for the purpose of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of one or more employees in the community relations of planning and development departments, and discussion, negotiations, incident proposed contractual arrangements related to the fire department. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Is there a second? Thank you, all the, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, we'll go in there for executive sessions.